was urged by the spirit of the Lord. A man who was urged by the spirit of the Lord. And who was that man?
Avanthan Simpson.
And he is called a Samson.
In the Simpson, or a curious character, he was silent.
This Samson, for an important period, he kept silent. And no good works happened through him. After he come to an appointed growth. One day he sat in the camp of Dan. The camp of Dan between Zora and Estol. In that plea, the spirit of the Lord came on him and the spirit of the Lord started to move on him. This moving or urging, these are the words which is often you speak in Tamil Nadu. And if something or not prospered to him and they may say something at their cost to him. Even our believers are using more these terms. In some of the incident, it is true. But we should not think about this true in all the matters and we have to be believe in this. First of all, we must have the confidence or hope that one who is in this is greater. And another thing, you must feel all the other powers are subjected to us. This Samson, when he was an appointed plea, the spirit of God started to move on him. And today's message, the spirit of God's urging or moving. If the spirit of the Lord started to or began to move in a person's life and how his life would be? It is very needed for you to analyze and who is urging or moving in you. Samson is not a normal person. He was born in consecration. He was grown in consecration. And he was strengthened in consecration. And he troubled enemies in consecration. And he came to the state of losing his consecration, once again he renewed his consecration and ends race victoriously. And Samson means it is a race of the sun. Our righteousness, the son of righteousness is of Lord Jesus Christ. We are the people of God who reflect the light of God. And we are appointed to reflect the power of God. His power. And his glory. And his life. And his character. His greatness. And we are appointed as the sunlight or the sun rays to reflect to others. We are the rays of sun. When he was a son. And every people of God were appointed to reflect those rays. And when the spirit of God began to move or urge you. When you are found in any that place, it will not urge you, but when you are found in the camp of Dan, he will start to move with you. There were twelve camps. Among the twelve camps and one was found in the camp of Dan, the spirit of God began to move. And I ask you to hear this message properly. And you must observe it keenly. If you observe not keenly, when you return, it will not be used in your life. In Christian life, in Pentecostal life, in spiritual life, there is an experience of being urged by spirits. They that are urged by spirit, they that are led by spirit and they that are bound by spirit can reach a design and you're just selling. Those who are anointed, if they do not have the urging of spirit and he was not led by the spirit of the Lord. That urging even may come during the time of worship. You pass through a place, when you are getting urging, you will change your direction. You will depart, but the spirit of the Lord will give you urging and you will stop there. You may keep silent, but the spirit of the Lord may urge you and you will start immediately from the place. And we can see many people of God, those were found in Old Testament to New Testament times. In Old Testament, we did, we did not allege that the Lord said to hide himself. And he said to go, show yourself. And in one place, when he revealed him. And what Obadiah seen. Now you reveal yourself, the spirit of the Lord may carry you immediately. And if, I say, I saw Elijah, they make me. And Elijah had the practice, the spirit of God carrying him or urging him or taking him in such practice. And you can see the same incident. One day, when he was sad with the children. And he said immediately to depart to the direction towards south of Beltona to Gaza. And the place, I can see, the chariot was moving in a far distance. And the spirit of the Lord say, join with the chariot. And in anointing, he joined that place. Do you believe? And there is a life of urged by spirit. When this urging of spirit on one side. And there is another part of urging by the devil. And now we have to understand rightly. Knowing not this, will the spirit of God speak to me or urge me, will lead me, and if we don't have this practice, the Pentecostal people may fail. Sometimes the experience which I say may be with many of you. Or sometimes we have lost it. Or you may be in the path without having this practice. When he was in the camp of Dan between Zora and Estol and the spirit of God started to move on him and then after life started. What does it mean? When a man is started by urging by the spirit of God and his life history will start in heaven. Until then, he was an ordinary person. When he was urged by the spirit, when the Lord is taking him in hands and all the greatness of the scripture will be written in him. The place where you should be is the camp of Dan. And what the father says about Dan. And what the servant says about Dan. When we look into book of Genesis, chapter forty-nine verse seven. And it is said about Dan and he is a serpent. And it is said that he is like an viper. And how the servant of God or a believer can be like a servant? And when we think about serpent, immediately devil comes into our mind. But this serpent is having this special nature. What is it? And it is so wise. So Jesus said, be harmless as cows and be wise as serpents. Even it is on the floor, when hearing our noise, it will become so strange. Our believers are harmless but in business and they also not wise. And the place when they are mingling with the people and they are harmless, but they don't have the wise nature to be with the people. The reason for many of the believers not to be falling into snare of the devils is that and they were not shrewd and they were not having this wise nature. But Dan is so wise. Comparing to all the thirteen children and Dan is just shrewd. And why they loves and why they talk in this manner and he is so shrewd in all these things. When the servant of God speak about him, about in Deuteronomy, chapter thirty-two verse twenty-two. And Dan is a lion's well. And he shall leap from base. And he is like a lion. And he is the one, he is always true. Lion is not an ordinary thing, it shows boldness. And no one is neat for this way as a timid one. For this way, a bold people not needed. One group of people and went with gideon for a war. The Lord saw their hearts. And Lord said to them. And thirty thousand were gathered. But no one was so courageous. When the lights were off and they will keep praising. And immediately the power off in their home. And these group, when looking into the list and they will go away from the place and how they flee from this group. And thirty thousand were gathered there. And the Lord said to them. You make an announcement. And what was the announcement? And they that are having this fear and terror may flee away from this place. And did not say. He was making only one announcement. And they that have fear and terror, you go away from this mound. When they came for a war. And hearing this word, all these people and they turn about. And looking into Peter and his disciples and the Lord said, Jesus, and if you have a heart of you, you can go away. And this way is not for the timid. Before you come here. But after coming here and you must become the warrior. And looking unto the drunkards and messy and they become timid. But when they clear and they will be timid. And if he has a warrior, if he is a hero, if he is drunk drinking. If the first person after drinking and they make cry like a timid. But when the timid drinks and they see and those was killed on the other way, they will kill them. It's not like that. After coming to this way and this anointing will make you as a hero. So the Bible says, and you what is the name of the man? And he that was to them entangled not in the war. And if they were found in the camp of Dan and those were wise as servants, the spirit of God can control them and urge them. And what is the meaning of Zora and Estol?
Zora, Estol.
And Zora means it is the. It is a bee that stink. But if it was confusing them, it may kill. And the name of the Zora is the one that prick that is a bee. The meaning is that when they keep the light. And he that touches you, touches my. And he that. When you are right in the spirit of God, when you touched you and it touched the bee. The world they used to see. And when they touch some people and they touch the honeycomb and they may be killed. And you are a bee. And you are a bee that is stink. And if they touched you, everything was over. And you, the people of God, must have the assurance. And Zora and Estol. And these are the two places. And between these two, the Dan camp was formed. And what is the meaning of Estol? And one were hearing with desire. Coming to the sermon, we are sleeping. And these fans and lights and you have made a practice with this. And you have to hear the spirit of God's voice with desire. Only with such people, the Lord can do something. Once again, I repeat. And you must be the wise as serpent. And you must be the like. And you must have the certainty, they that touch at you, touch at the. And you must be the one who hear the voice of the Lord's desire. Lord tell and servant will hear. Lord tell and servant will hear. Are you able to hear the voice of God with desire? May the God's holy name be glorified. In this gap in the center place, when he was there and he was able to hear the spirit of God's voice. Then after, the God's anointing came upon him strongly. And we all know the greatness of his life then after. Let us come back to our message. And who is urging you? And what urging is in you? Now you have to identify. Sometime you should not deceive yourself or deceive others. And sometime when they are urging, some they are moving this spirits or some devils to come in your family and it was troubling your whole family. Some demons, if you does not fleeing and they may tell, it was urged by someone. If you give such grade to them and it will never depart. One pastor came. And he got fever. And two pillows were given to him. And fever was increased. And bed sheets and blankets were given to him. I feel that fever will not be heat for me. And they give hot water. And they gave some porridge. When two pillows and all these blankets and all this porridge was given and all this fever will be increased. When it comes light, they given pillows. When the temperature was increased and they gave blankets. They analyze, identify the temperature rate and if it was increased and if it was going, all these things and welcoming this and this fever may be increased. Pastor Selvam used to suffer because of this reason. And even during recordings in the messages and you may hear some sounds. One pastor asked, and why you are suffering with this disease? And this sickness is suffering you a lot. And you were entangled this disease. And he said. And it was entangled with me. I keep saying that it was entangled with me and how can you say that I was entangled with it? What we are doing, think about. Who are urging you? And I was urged by the spirit of the Lord to keep some points before you. And first is wrong urging. And second, what is urging of the Lord? And sitting here, you are telling wrongly that he urged me and everything go wrong with you. You may be God. But whose urging is with you? You may be a king. Whose urging is with you? Today you have to understand very clearly. And you may be this. And what is urging in you? And some they will not do, but make others to do it. And they keep silent. But who have troubled them? And he will be the key matter. But he will escape from the place. And some are having such gifts. And they may induce others, even if the believer, the servants of God and they will flee away to home. Be careful. And who are urging you? When we look into first Chronicles, chapter twenty-one verse one. An anointed person and how he was urged. And this Satan provoked David. And see the anointed person and who is controlling by provoking him. And you can see in Second Samuel, chapter twenty-four verse one. And what urging is given by Satan. And he gave urging to count the people. And this throne was established. And his kingdom was established. Now there was no more. No more problems. And the emperor was going in a proper way. And Satan entered the place. And it entered into David. And these many people are there and number them. And you can see some of the people and they will count the money for two days and then after two days. And he had a thought to count the people. The Bible says, it did not come suddenly to him and the Satan provoked him. And don't think only the sinner will be provoked, even the anointed people, when they were not bound to it and when they are not able to analyze it and they will bound and to it and they will come under to this. And what is the purpose of this urging? And it make them to transgress the law. And there is a law. To number the people. Before numbering the people and they must make an sacrifice, an automan of sacrifice. And then after they can make. Undebted, they must give the purity, then after they must make this counting. This law was mentioned, book of Exodus, chapter thirty, verse twelve. If you have to count, you make a number of the people. And there are some of the laws that he must do for it. Only then after he must make this number. If not so, if he was not giving the ransom and the people may be destroyed. He gave no ransom, but he numbered the people. Then what happened? One group of people were destroyed in that place. Because of this provoking or urging and what happened to them and one multitude of people or group of people were countless. And sometimes the Satan may urge you suddenly. In the small provoking, at last seventy thousand people were destroyed. You can see in book of Second Samuel, chapter twenty-six, verse fifteen. In Second Samuel, chapter twenty-four, verse fifteen. He transgressed, he singlemitted a single law, so at seventy thousand people were destroyed. Why I gave this message today, that even if you are giving room for the small provoking and you will be destroyed. And David was telling, told to John. And why to count? No need. And he said, I see you, you number the people. The Bible says, the words of David provide over. Then what mean? And in book of the Second Samuel, chapter twenty-four, verse four, four. Even to hinder the words of the devil and the Satan, the Lord is giving his words. No need. And you are transgressing. You are overtaking the words. Even the spirit of the Lord is breaking there by giving the people. But the urging or provoking of Satan was made so. The reason is after getting beating and he got the clearness. And he said unto God, I made mistake, you sleep. Before that, then seventy thousand people. In your family, in your life, in your house and in your business, in your job and you have given room for the Satan's provoking and so you have countless of many things. When we look into book of Acts, chapter sixteen, verse sixteen. And when Apostle Paul was moving the place and when the woman was looking unto him, he start to shout. And what she will shout. And when he was crossing and the spirit will come in her. And what is the spirit in her? And it is the spirit to. And the spirit was in her. And when he was crossing, he will utter. And this servant of God is of the most high God. And they say, a show and it was a way of salvation. And this is the word she used to utter every day when he was crossing. And the Paul says, and shut up. And he say, I command you. When he was supposed to start to speak with the spirit, it departed. And you may say this servant of God is the most high one. And devil came and to speak unto Jesus and you are the most high. Not only men, even you should not give room for the Satan to exalt you. Once again, I repeat. If the devil have exalted and praised you and that praise will lift you up and put you down. And we prayed a lot for a sister who was entangled by the demons. It was a right prayer. And one day Pastor Aruldas came suddenly. And he was the center pastor. At the end of the worship and we sent the sister to pray unto him. And he was the one who was chasing with the demons. And he was the one born to chase with the demons. When he boarded the bus and those who were possessed by demons, the bus will, with all the demons will be departed. And one day when he was traveling in the auto and one was possessed by demons. How powerful man. And such a powerful man he was. And he went to. And he went to the main meeting. And when departed and he locked the door. When they are taking the handle in the door. And without listening and he locked the door and his weak fingers were caught. And without listening and he locked the door and his weak fingers were caught. And he got bled. And he could not bathe the pain in his age. And then he was bound with something and half second. And there was no peace with him. And from here and we was wounded in our hands. And once again, he got some conflicts. When he went to the room. And he called the servant of God who closed the door. And brother, he closed the door. And they called him. He bent his knees. He laid his hands. And he started to roll around. And why did you close the door? When my hands is with me, why do you want to close the door? And he started to warn him. And you, you know, and he asked. He closed the door, the spirit closed the door. If so, and you just think and see. Many powers may come. And they may praise and famous. Now, they made the sister to pray before him. And he was a terrible person. And before the spirit comes out and he will tell the spirit which leaves her. And such a person. Leaving the spirit in him. And who ever missy, I will not depart. It's big to him. And he was standing before the sister and I was standing behind her to control her. And whoever missy, will not you go? And when school will chase and you will defeat. And one who was standing behind, if you chase me, I will run. And he slapped her by saying that only if he says, I will flee away and then after he says, in name of Jesus, go and it departed. And Satan may cast you in this way and be giving you fame and name and you may think that because of this greatness and you may go top. And this is the spirit which is provoking to do the divination. And looking unto you, will start to speak. And looking unto you, it will tell all the stories. It will tell the whole history. And no need to fear for it and no need to be amazed for it. The spirit is provoking to divine. And this spirit is with some people. Not only that. When we look on the book of Matthew, chapter fourteen. And it was a good birthday. It was the birthday of the hero. And everywhere there were dances. And no, don't think the dance wasn't right now, it was in the old days also. Even the believers were making their children to dance and even at the dancing now, at the age of twenty, they will do the same thing, at that time you will dance. And you will rejoice by then dancing. By twenty or twenty third year and they will be dancing and you will start dancing. And same dancing took place. And they celebrated a great birthday. At the end of the dancing and the king asked, what do you want? And she was a smart girl. And what she did? And she came straightly to mother. And the king asked, what do you want? And already the mother was in different tension and her child was dancing, why? And Herod had got his wife as his own brother's wife. And Herod was using the brother's wife as his own wife. And who was the dancer, he was the brother's wife's children. And they have taken the brother's wife and Pastor John, they came to the place. And John the Baptist came to the place. Your ruling is correct and now why you have taken the wife as a brother's wife? And when the pastor told his mistake and he got tensed. And immediately he were permitted him to cast in the prison. And we became the enemies because we have proclaimed the truth. And they said that and you did wrong and he was put in prison. Now, the dancer, which is the brother's wife, was dancing now. And they have accused another part of the brother's wife. And the dancer asked to, what, Herod is asking, what do you want? And what she replied, you know? And the mother instructed the dancer and he asked for the John Baptist's head. Fourteen eight of Matthew. So, we are telling you should not celebrate birthday. And some they are celebrating the birthday by giving the gifts and you're drinking and you're enjoying and celebrating. A single prayer you must end with it. About the cards and wishes and messages and this birthday will go in some other way. The great beauty is even those who are at the age of eighty-five and they're telling the Lord, have I given me another year? And you must be thankful to God. In one place and they will not come for the birthday but they will come for them. And they were born in spirit. And don't join that in your account. And this mother instructed that a dancer to get the head of the servant of God. If so, and how the mother would be? And how the dancer would be? And no one is pleased like John was born among the women. And he started to behave the one who was burning us. And hating one another provoking that you must be destroyed and you should not have this urging. And because of your zeal in you and you should not instruct the others and you should not speak with this people, only we can refrain them. And you can tell if one is transgressing the law of the church. If they resist against the truth and the doctrines and the life and you can hinder them not to speak but according to spiritual life and you should not hinder them not to speak with others. And you should not be like such a mother. Will a mother can urge to take the head of a servant of God? It is said in book of second Chronicles, chapter twenty two, verse three, to go in a very cut way. When we look on the book of Job, chapter twenty, verse three. And now there were battling between the Job and his friends. And the friend will utter a word and he will tell the chapter for them. And because of this tension and he will reply to. And they started to speak one another and they got crossed over the forty-two chapters. The history of Job can be completed within four or five chapters. And all this conflicts of Satan was. Forty-one, forty-two and with these chapters and we can end the history of Job by five chapters. And all these between the thirty-seven chapters and they spoke and they have turned over the Bible. And these three join and urge this provoke. And why this happened to you? And if you are a holy one, this will happen to you. And hearing this, a Job will be tense and he may tell and you can stand upright and you can analyze. And when you read the book of Job and you never. And cursed me by birthday. And the God's holy name be glorious. And he wrote the whole chapter to curse his birthday. And he started to give a story and it was not being burned on me and not more found in the mothers. And when speaking like this and one urged by saying that my thoughts cause me to answer. And when the urging come out of you and you should not make it by words and you must control. When you are speaking and four or five members may speak against you and you will hear the urging to speak to them. Because you are also once was start to speak in. And it was stored in hard disk. And because of this. If others induced you to speak these words and you will start to speak the bad words which you have. And his friend says, my thoughts cause me to answer, for this I make to haste. Your thoughts may provoke anything and you should not speak all those things. When we look on the book of Job, chapter twenty, verse three. And the spirit of men is standing cause of me to answer. Your spirit, your thoughts may urge you or make it to come out but you should not do it and you must control. And you must have the dardle in you. And you must have a break in you. He may speak but you should not reply. And that had come in your thoughts, you should not make my words. And you may have the urging to kill others and by words you may say that to kill you and that will make you not. And for the urging of your thoughts and the urging of the spirit of men and you should not obey for it and you should not be subjected to it. And check and what is the urging in you? Control yourself. And anything may come in your mind but you should not put out in the words. And some used to say that I will not have the way to hide my heart and like a saint they may openly. And they that are of Christ and they are the. And it is the greatness of the king to hide the matters. It is not needed for to speak. It is not needed for you tell you of everything. And that comes in your mind that the thoughts and spirit you should not reveal it out. And some others may tune you and induce you. And they may think that even you should not utter towards. In one place there was a fighting. And they used to often fight. And he never speak. And he induced him and. And he induced the sister to speak and he started recorded, at last he made the recording to the pastor. And pastor got tensed and. And this is what many are speaking and you were entangled? Your spirit may provoke you. Thirty-two eighteen of Job. The words of fulfill in me. The spirit in me was urging. And he says, when it would come like a new bottles burst out and it comes really in me. What short the words are found in you? What urging is in you? Oh, the witchcraft or any divine spirit. Or others are inducing or urging you to speak against others, your mothers, your friends are urging like this. Their thoughts and mind have urged you like this. In Matthew, chapter twenty seven, verse twenty, and they caused Jesus to kill him. And who induced and describes the parises and the high priest and they have induced him? And they asked that Parabas to release. But they urged the Jesus to kill. And see what kind of spirit it was. And all elders and high priests and scribes and parises, they urge the people to kill the Jesus. And how you are urging your children? You must provoke them to learn them. You must induce them to pray. You must tune them to pray. You must tune them to go to ministry. You should not lead your children contrary to the divinity. And second Kings, chapter twenty one, verse twenty-nine, and Manasseh the king and he might urge the people to commit wrong things. Second Kings, chapter twenty one, verse nine. And King Manasseh and made the people to do the abominations more wicked to the others. And for the all worldly things and you should not make your children to go in this. And be not be urged to do the common wrong things. And you should not make the people those who following you. And we can see in the history of the churches and one pastor made the church members to go to the prison and were making the passage by telling that we are going to reach to his. Palashir Lari. Palashir Lari. Palashir Lari, Tamil Nadu. And there was a person called Palashir Lari. And many have heard about him. And he was a gifted person. When one time comes. And he says, when man laid his leg on the sun and Lord came down. When man laid his feet on moon and Lord came down. And hearing this and many sold the possessions and followed them. And half of them, they sold the possessions and said, Jesus is coming. At last, how he was changed. And he started having the name priest and started the chase of the demons. And he changed his name and changed it to Guru Devi. And he got an ashram, at last he died. And these are the ones who are inducing the people to do wrong things. And making them to go for the wrong things. And there was a verse in the Bible, if it was like that, how they can go? And one was drunk and was slept in his house. And what was, where it is mentioned in the Bible, they should not do. I was not disturbing anyone, after drinking I sleep. And I was not an offense to anyone after drinking. And you may revert the verse. Thurubadesathukyajanganalay, thesai thirupala
And you can change it, people to the direction of the Lord's doctrines
Tavarusaiye ni janathay yevade
You should not urge the people to commit wrong things
Iidukalam bible la, madhaliye, obahamam, 13 adigara, ipri patte yevudal varu, abidina aviyanavatthi choli vuchirkar
And such urging will become in the book of Deuteronomy, chapter 13, it is mentioned
Obahamam, 13, enna soludhe
And what Deuteronomy, chapter 13 says
Oru van vandu, onnay tavarunadatta yavi naal
If one comes to do, commit a wrong thing
33, 9, when we see 33, 9, sorry, obahamam, 13
Because Deuteronomy, chapter 13, verse 7
Annye devagale sevikumbodi, ragasyamay orutthan, onnay yevi vittaal
And if someone comes secretly to serve the strange god
Induk namdai viswashigalakku da, sabai galukulavitthiasan tharla
Even our believers that they don't have this differentiation about the churches
Namam alangalakke, velangani kunnamukulavitthiasan tharla
For our people, they did not know the difference between the velangani and our church
Na, thirumavun cholra
Once again, I see
Namam viswashigalay, velangani ku pora
Even other reverse, they are going to
Anga boy kani ku pora
And they offer the
Na, idakeli vupada, achne man, yuvukay, adukkay, idukulavu, oru vitthiasan tharliya, vikravara, danikey, ulavitthiasan tharliya
Hearing this, I was amazed and they don't have the difference between our worship and their idol worship
Adhumadaan cholit, namdai walkaila, remba gavana markano
And saying that as mother and we should be very careful in our life
Annye devagale sevikumbodi, ragasyamay oru van yevi vittaal, patha vasanathinbodi, avanay kallarinde, kollavendav
And if they urge them to serve the strange god and according to verse 10, and they must stone and kill him
Oni patha maathradhuk, avanadu yevu na, na, avanak kallarindji kollanun, chuli, patha vasanam chulukara
Verse 10 says, if someone comes to change your direction, then you must stone and kill him
Ni, andha pagidila, ni thirimbikuda poogu kudaade
And you should never go towards the direction
Ha, ni andha, andha vallame, ni alikavendu, mandu cholapadu
And it says that you must destroy that power
2 naalagamo, 18 madhigara te parukumbrudhe
When we look on to 2nd Chronicles, chapter 18
Anga onnu rendala parukumbrudhe
Verse 1 and 2
Tavaranai aikayatukyavu vittaan
And they urged him for the wrong fellowship
Tavaranasammandangalakkay yevu vittaan
And he provoked them for a wrong joining
Satyathala, ningatheli vaile, chunnan, ungalap, pisasi, engyaadu konduboi, yallar, kristavan choli, onnakivutruva
If you are not proper and adopted and he may say that every Christianity or United States and they will make them to join them
Kathrude parisutha namathukumai mundavada
May the God's holy name be glorious
Iduvarai, nan tavaranay yevudalgalay, sutikattine
Until now, I have pointed you out the wrong
Ipa, sariyana yevudal enna
Now, what is the right urging
Adhe namavelangi kola vinti
We must understand, that is very needed
Valibergalala, the message, ninga kettin, ninga practice panni, bayathodan, nadukthodan, arukano
All the young people and you must hear this message, you must be, you must practice this
Quick diversion manla
And you are able to be quickly diverted
Ninga, ninga divertaidhigana, whole life, apriyap patha maripeda
When you are diverted, the whole life will be diverted
Ena ni, iruvali sandhilakattapattavu oru kaladani
Because you are the ash which was found in the two directions
Kellaka, amerkana, onakutthiriyadu
And you know where is the south or not
Deva sittha, enna, puriyam, tadumariitiruva
And you may be stumbling
Indha tyattala, onen enga thirupurana, adha onu vali
And where you are diverted and that is your way
Adhalatthi yesu chunnara, indha 2 valilani, ni poogada, yana kuvanu, naaludhitu, chunnan
And Jesus said, don't go on these two directions and you come on my way
Adhalatthi indha vishitla, remba gavana markano
And you must stick here in this matter
Chinnavaisilai, parisuthaavi, yevudal, onakutthava
Even in this young age, you must have the urging of the spirit of the Lord
Simpson parandhan
And Samson was born
Andha pillay vararundadu
And that the child was born
Devan, onen aasilvaditha
And the Lord blessed him
Avan yevat thovakina
The Lord started to provoke him
Andha parisuthaavi la, nerappatattavu oru walkai, da yevudal ulavu oru walkai
And being filled by the spirit of God and that is a life being filled by this
Andha abhishekam, onen yevat thovangina odane, avanukulay, palaporatangal vandadu
When the anointing started to urge him and he got many color conflicts in his life
Andha poratam enna
And what are the conflicts
Avanukulay, kankali nichay porat arambithadu
And the lusts of the eyes started to stow in him
Abhishekam vandaparadu, da onakulay poratam jastiyavu
When the anointing comes inside you and you will have more conflicts
Yes, yanasana, betta odane, parisuthaavi eranginadu, parisuthaavi eranganadu odane, avarukuporatam thodanginadu
When Jesus was baptized and given, when the spirit of God descended on him and this conflict started to arise
Yaayadiparigal 14, 1 la parukumbrudhe, da avanukal kankali nichay undakrada
In Book of Judges, chapter 14, verse 1, we can see the lusts of eyes started to stow in him
Indha kankali nichay, avan erangundukku, pona bodhu, singham, avan edirukulukrada
When he gave room for the lusts of the eyes, a line came against him
Paranga, ewadu karakta, andha vallam, poratunparanga
And see how the power strove hard with him
Aviyanavara erangittara
The spirit of God gave him
Indha nartala, avan de kankali nichay, avan erangundukara
And this time, he gave room for the lusts of the eyes
Ipo singha ulavadu
Now, the line came inside
Avanudaya target enna, na, onen yilutukonduboi, ipriyali churunnu
And what is its target to some to drag you and kill you
Ana kirubeyul devan enna pandara
But what the grace used to
Andha abhishekam, balamay, avan mele erangirich
And the spirit of the Lord came mightily upon him
Avan, andha singha, thukili, thukili, vali
He rent the line and came out
Avi kuria walkaila, indha vishitla, ninga gavana markano
In your spiritual life, you must stick here in this matter
Parisuthaavi, onakulay, balamay, eranganadu, sadarana abhishekam, adhalatthi, naanikol, nalla abhishitla, naramgund
So, I say you must be mightily filling the anointing
Ninga Simpsonadu walkai padchupadhina
When you read about the life of Samson
Sadarana abhishekam, eranganadu, padikalaa, balamay, eranganadu, padikalaa
And you can see, the anointing came ordinarily on him and mightily upon him
Ninga, yaayadiparigal 14, 6
When we look on to Book of Judges, chapter 14, verse 6
Balamay, eranganadu, ninga parkalaa
You can see, it came upon him mightily
14, 15 parukumbrudhe
When we look 14, 19
Kathrude avi, sadarana, eranganadu, parkalaa
We can see the spirit of the Lord came ordinarily upon him
19 madhigara, 14 vasanathte parukumbrudhe
When we look on to 15, 14 of Judges
Marbadiyim, balamay, eranganadu, ningal parkalaa
And you can see, once again, it came mightily upon him
Iipri ovadathli, balamay, eranganadu, sadarana, eranganadu, rendaima, ninga parukumbrudhi
In many places, you can see, it came upon him ordinarily and mightily
Balamay, eranganadu, singha, thukili
When it comes upon him mightily, he will throw the legs
Sadarana abhishekam, thujit, janangalay, merkondaa
With ordinary anointing and he will overcome the people
Sariyana abhishekam, thujit, mirungalay, kili thupotaa
With right and proper anointing, he prevail over the beasts
Abhishekam, udaya variationla, da ondai jayam, arangirukkara
And obviously, according to the extent of this anointing, your victim is rested
Indha avi, yevat thovakina odane, avan ellimbi veliyavandita
When the spirit started to urge him, he came out
Adhurikam, avan yaarame, sadarana, merkondla, mudi
Until then, no one can overcome us so easily
Pradistayirundadu
He was, had a consecration
Ana, avan yaasiya, yaarame, merkondala
And easily, anyone can overcome him
Ana, aviyanavatthi, pradistayodu, cherumbodhu
But when the spirit of God enjoined with this and consecration And there he become the mighty man
Na thirumavun cholukara
And once again, I see
Onakulay pradistayal, palay irukke
And there are many consecrations in you
Ovar viswashigalaklin, chella pradistayirukke
And every believer is having consecration
Ovar prasangak, kakkumbrudhe, bible padikkumbrudhe, aviyanavatthi, yevu bodhu, ningal pradistayal, pannikirirka
When you are hearing the sermon, when you read the word of God and you are making some consecration
Adhu yappo, unnudaya belanay maro
When it becomes your strength
Aviyanavatthi ulavarumbrudhi
When the spirit of God comes to you
Abhishekam, pradistayin, chandrichina, onen asake, avanukum mudi
When the anointing and consecration join together and no one can shake you
Veru abhishekam, thujit, unnu jadikamudiyaade
We can do, not do anything with an
Veru pradistay, thujit, unnu jadikamudiyaade
And you cannot achieve anything with an ordinary anointing
Renne serumbodhu, da onen asake, mudiyaadu, sakthi amarva
When it joins together and you will become the power which no one can shake
Ninga sabai la paranga
You can see the church
Oru perun thural, kootan, janangal, abhishekam, betchavark
The multitude of people are anointed
Sadarana manavark
But you are ordinary
Oru perun thural, kootan, kujanangal, pradistayulavu, avanakar
But many group of people and they were consecrated
Na thirumavun cholukara
Once again, I see
Anegar, abhishekam, bethtrukiriga
Many are anointed
Ana, ongalala, unnu jadikamudiyaadu
But you cannot achieve anything
Anegar, pradistayulavu, avanakir
Many are consecrated
Misadutiruva
You
Marandutikamata Thadiyadutiruva Na, na, ondu, unmiyaruppa, ipri palap pradistay, ninga pandri
I'll take the moustache, I will remove the jewels, I will take the beard and will take, do, many consecration I will come in white and white garments I will read the bible
Ana, ungalakvalamay lli
But you don't have power
White and white, pottu, oni powerful, maritaya
When you wear the white garments, or you become a powerful, no
Abhishekam, pradistayin, joineda
Anointing and consecration are joined together
Angadaan, devunadu sakthi, nikko
And there, the power of Lord will stand
Adhalatthi, sariyana yevudal, onakulay varnu
So, you must get the right urging
Looka, 2 madhigara, 27 vasanathle parukumbrudhe
When we look on to Book of Luke Gospel, chapter 2, verse 27
Anga enna cholapadukkaraade
And what it said there
Deva aviyn yevudil nalay, simion enkaramanishan, deva alayetukku vendhaan
And by the spirit of the Lord's urging and the man called Simeon came to the temple of God
Nalla gavuniga
How come?
Chachi ku varradu, kuda, onakur yevudal arukano
Even you come, come to the church, you must have the urging
Tidinu, onen aviyanavatthi, sabai ki poochunna, adhu vandha yevudal, ennanukrada, ni kondubidichu varnu
If the spirit of the Lord asks suddenly you to go to the temple of God and you must understand the urging of the spirit of the Lord
Sandegetuk, nalla edangundukara
And you are giving room for the doubts
Purushamela, sandeegam, pillamela, sandeegam, manivmela, sandeeganna, onakus, cella edukunnu, noontanu, pinala, ponnu, randila, ponnu, idhalal, kondubidikthiridu Ana, parisuthaavi, yevudal, ennanukrada, unna, kondubidiktharla
And even you having doubts on your children or your family members or your parents and you will go after them, but when you urge with the spirit of the Lord, you don't have the spirit to analyze it
Orunala, Simeon, vittla, ukandara
And one day, Simeon sat in his house
Namavaisana mansha
Yesuva Aviyanavariyevinar, avar vanandarathukuponna.
And the spirit of God urged Jesus and he went to wilderness.
Aviyanavariyevumbrudhu, onakke neera paralavundhanake kudada, Aviyanavariyevuvar.
And when you, the spirit of the Lord is urging you and you should not think that you will reach to heaven and he may take you to wilderness.
Ange bhangarama sodikepatthar.
And he was tempted more.
One ralla, rendalala, mountrusodhanegalavarka anikkepatthar.
Not one or two or three temptations and three temptations was given to them.
Aviyanavaraalayevuputtuponnadunala, avrakichayam karche.
He was urged by the spirit of the Lord, so he got victory.
Aviyanavaraalayevupadamil, neepadugirasodhanegalanaitto onakavilchi.
And when you are not urged by the spirit of God, when you are moving and everything will be a failure for you.
Aviyanavaraalayevuputtini vanandarathukuponnina, onakichayam.
When you are urged by the spirit of the Lord, when you reach wilderness and you there is a victory.
Yesuva Aviyanavaraalayevuputtu vanandarathukuponnar, kaattumirungolode sanjarithar, ange, avar sodikepatthar. Anal, deva oolieragal, deva doodargal, avrakooliyam seedargalina adutha vasanam jollukaradha.
And the spirit of God urged Jesus to go to the wilderness with the urging, he went to the wilderness and he was tempted by Satan and he was with the white beast but by angels of God ministered him.
Yesuva irundhalame Aviyanavadeyevudal thavupottichinga.
Even it was Jesus and there is need of the spirit of God urging.
Vaisanaaladu simyonukka devaaviyinevudal thavupattade.
Even the Simeon was old in age and he got, he was in need of the urging of the spirits.
Valibanana Simpsonukka Aviyinevudal thavipattade.
And even for the engh Samson, there is a need of the spirit of the Lord urging.
Esra, madhala madhikarav, madhala vasanathay parkumbadhu.
When we look at the book of Ezra, chapter one verse one.
Esra onrre onrre.
Eremyavin vayinale, kartar svennavarthene neraveerumbodi, persiyavin raja vage koresude madhala marshutile, kartar persiyavin raja vage koresin aviyeyevinadinaale.
Persiyavin raja vayye koresin aviyeydaimum yevinar.
And he stood up the spirit of the side as a king of Persia.
Aindhamasanaathle namidapogidiyaparkala.
And we can see this part in the book.
Yavarkal aviyey devan yevinaro, avrakallarum elumbinar.
With all them whose spirit God have raised up and they all stood up.
Edarkaga Aviyey yevinar.
Why he stood up?
Deva alayate kattumbadiyaa.
To build the temple of God.
Parisutthaviyanavaru onadie jiviamagiyaa alayate kattae onakkulavur yevudal kodukano.
And Holy Spirit must give you a urging or stirring up to build up the temple of God, your life.
Ni deva alayam kattumbadiyaa eluppappattavan.
You are the one who was risen up to build the temple of God.
Esra onrre rendalal namidavartay parkumbadhi.
So you can see in book of Ezra, chapter one verse two.
Erisilemili, dhanakke devande alayate kattumbadi devaneenakka katleetukkara.
And he charged me to build him house at Jerusalem.
Yappudu onde jivitukuritha or yevudal onakirukano.
And you must always having the urging about your life.
Viswasaathukuritha or yevudal irukano.
About your faith.
Onadie parisutthathukuritha or yevudal irukano.
And urging about your holiness.
Jabikkarakudi or yevudal irukano.
Urging up to pray.
Yappu pathaal onakkula Aviyanavadeyavur thundudhal nanadukiteerukano.
And whatever time it may be, there must be the inducing or spirit of God in you always.
Nigparanga the sensor machine la ningaparka pathirpinga.
And you can see in the sensor machine.
Alavu kaiyavittaa, odane, ilathalaya kaatna sattham kodukko, signal kodukko.
When you stick out your hands or.
Abidana, cutting machine la sensor ochirka.
In the cutting machine, there was a sensor.
Kaiya, anthe, onadimitla kaiyaneeditinga, odane nisindro, cutpannada, nipati.
In a particular limit, when you are sticking your hands and it will not cut your hands.
Padugabukusensor ochirkaanga.
And for protection, there was a sensor.
Or edathavartan crosspantana kattaramchala.
If a person crosses a particular limit, he will start to shout.
At the same time. Ange power supply illavuttal, and the sensor nisayadhe, vela sayyad.
When there was no power supply, the sensor will not work.
Adubola.
Likewise.
Onakkulapaddevaaviyirukke, ana, sariyana akni illavutta, vela sayyad.
And spirit of God is in you, but there is no proper fire, it will not work.
Or raja unadie aviyey devan yevuvar.
And the Lord is stirring up the king's heart.
Adubola ni oru viswasi, night patthumanikke devan aviyanayevuvar, enne jommananu.
You are a believer, at night ten o'clock, the spirit of God may urge you to pray.
Abishagambetonaarkala, abishagayaavama, neetungidukkunavu irukala.
If you are anointed one, and if you are maybe without anointing sleeping.
Ana abishagansariyarenada, devaaviyanavur neyevuvar.
But if there was a right anointing, the spirit of the Lord will urge you.
Yavarkal aviyey devan yevinaro, avrakallam elumbinar.
And they that were with them, the spirit of the Lord stood up and they.
Onkudubattal nalwerunna, nalweraviyendevan yevinaran, nalwerun nightlu kandijabikaramchirvinga.
Before in your family, the spirit of the Lord is urging them to pray and you will start to praying.
Aduthadaa.
Nextly.
Onnusamvella parkumbadhu.
When we look into first Samuel.
Patthamadhikarav.
Chapter ten.
Irvathiyara vasanathenigal parkumbadhu, tungukudada, munnalavukantungunina, pinala vayukandukunna, na. Aduvasadyaarukka, diipoylalaveli, nishubala, groundedigala. Onnusamvell, patthamadhikarav, irvathiyara vasanam.
First Samuel, chapter ten, verse twenty six.
Angenecholapottukaradha.
What did he said there?
Savulodu pogumbadiyaa, ranuvathil yaarudie aviyey yevinaro, avrakallam savulodu yuthuthukuporappattar.
And Saul also went to home with them, the day that were urged by this God.
Devan yaarudie manadheyevinaro, avrakal kattarkaha yuthuthukelumbinar.
And they that were, whose hearts were touched by God and they started to go for war. And these are the last days.
Kattarkaha namelumbavindiya kal.
These are the time that we must rise up for God.
Ni kavodathamuditchina, ni enakkaha enneseydhanu kapad.
If you end your race and the Lord will ask, what you did for me?
Na onakkaha sette.
I died for you.
Onakkaha retthasindina.
I, shit, I'm black for you.
Onakkaha maranatharusi bartha.
I tasted death for you.
Ni enakkene ennesenja.
And what you did for me?
Ningonene soliviga.
What you will see?
Naantha olanga dasavavangudukkana, adilistliyavaraadu.
And rightly, I gave tithes and it will not come in list.
Or thagapavare, oru pillavandu, amma va pathiru, na onakshorupottha, abrintholradhu, adu periyasadanaya?
Is it a great achievement?
Onenepaluutti valathanga, neepukankjuutti valakara, paramariga, abidana. Karidhanan solradhu. Orugathalavu palutti, seerati, onenivalathanga, neeporuplatla thaniyapoddu, shorupoddu, yengiavasala oru room ochu, orankatti ochirukara.
And once they cared you by giving milk, but now you are giving some plate of food and you made them to sit in a corner.
Abidana, idanana ni senjirukara. Enneki, kattarkaha onakkelumbinikumudiyuma.
Are you able to stand up for God, tree?
Irvi swasa pathi or ranu.
And this path of faith is like a military.
Maranathukutunidinukkara or valkay.
And this is the thing that we are standing for both for this.
Devaaviyinadeanavaru onakkulamanadheyevanu.
And here, your spirit of God must urge your heart.
Onakal or nightoodanimberiyathungu edakudada, onen.
And Lord should not make you to sleep one night soon peacefully.
Or nightini nimberiyathungidina, anekonaito onakkulaviyanavur yevudal illanarto.
And if you have slept peacefully in a single night, there is no urging of spirit in you.
Nidhiyasmapesarare, abriniosi, na tungu edamatarukkunna. Or nightini oravi kurivan tungidina, onakani nightene illanarto. Aviyanavadeyevudal illa, manavati tunginal, en vastarathae kalathipotena, yar thadiduka? Yar thatra? Kadavaitthara, oru sattham kekka.
If a spiritual man is sleeping peacefully one night and there is no urging of the spirit of the Lord in me and he says that my risk is sleeping.
Avi kurionakki indavala kathila deep sleep kareyadu.
For a spiritual man, there is no deep sleep in this world.
Anelbiyadharpar.
And he will keep waking him.
Trainingla ningapatiina, vedikiarukka.
And you can see in the train.
Padaanor manikita, patthumijavamudiyam.
Only by eleven o'clock, ten o'clock praise will be seen.
Padaanorarundu nalumanikulla, onnavaru prayer chain.
From eleven to four and we have one of a prayer chain.
Ebediirka? Padaanunna, pannundu, onnu, rendu, monu, nal, idukulla oru manarao, adu padaanunnu to pannundu karasina, av lucki person.
And he got eleven to twelve and he was the luckiest person.
Yana, padaanor manikumudichipay kada kada edichipumutungurudina ido, pannundado, idanada padaanunnu to pannundu prayer chainna, odipuyukandruva. Ana, onnu to rendu, rendu to monu, ombo da, shetta, and the list a pathaunna, ve mulipapa, ayarnameari, talanjidu oru maasan thookan kareyadu. Unme, avyepapa, rendu to monu, thiripibri, even, even tungunadu padaanor mani, kada kada edichipannundu mani. Iparrendu to monu, na venisi no rendu maniki, adalakarata elipirvanga, karata unda, adukurtan duty poturva, ava vendu chati prichelipirva, vada, elumbavu, chavutukubavu. Rendu to monu kumudichita, thiripivundu tungumudiyadu, nal manikadutha chavu. Ebediirka? Idanala dam paadiyare, trainingli, urumari payara.
So many are transformed, even in the training.
Ni nam, velularunduponnapayangalampayiparanga, avan mareyathiriyadu, in the yogunadie snakeidragalavane vendupathapodudu, uruththiri amalrana mare, ponnavarsham ponnavanade, enneranachichorupollanu, illa illa, thookan nahilladu. Thookankaradhu sutthama konduva. Apaviyanavariyevanu.
The spirit of God must urge us.
Irvu boga, nalutda, angijavamudichu, onnavaru, and the break, adukulla pallukilavedichu, kaapiyupukudichu, aar manikavandu ukanda, avare, payanna mare, aadiyada, varutda, action, aadiyada. Avan thookathasutthama ochiravu.
And completely the drive away was sleeping.
Onaviyey, onmanadhey devaaviyanavariyevanada, idan ni saadikamudiy.
If the spirit of God urge your spirit and your heart and you can do, achieve something.
Yenasatla, naangor napaduvar, yenge batch, eighty four batch vandu, forty members.
And eighty four batch, we are forty members.
Adapathuvera mainla purichuchitanga.
And the ten, and they caught them in me.
Agaloral nal.
And one of, one of them was I.
Andamuppuvera veliyanipitanga, transfer.
And the thirty was transferred.
Pathuvera nipatiitanga.
And the ten was stopped there.
Ado, overthru, over specialty.
For everyone, there was a specialty.
Or renduveru, chipastakavnikaravu.
And two, care, I'm carrying chipast.
Account.
And two for accounts.
Oral press.
One for press.
Oral driving.
One for driving.
Oral welding.
And one for building.
Oral mason.
And one formation.
Na vandu hard worker, adavu, enna vela sonnalusairukaka, anyapichuchin.
And I was appointed to any work as a hard worker.
Adanala, enak transfer illa.
So there was no transform among me.
Yenawayarama arkanaa, yengiadu, kalavayadukkotunna, namalakudupanipattukinna, naantha, saram illamale, workpontrala.
And I was so high and whatever works I can do, so I was supported there.
Abayimuppuverum pitanga.
And thirty were transferred.
Ipo orudharvandu, enakor assistant, vellunnu, poradraru.
And one so hard to get the assistant for him.
Avar or famous preacher.
And he was a famous preacher.
Yepa, enakwarathukku nalukutarka, enala mudiyadu.
I have four meetings in a week.
Chavakalamorukutarku, balangalamorukutarku, yalakalamorukutarku, na cheththayavu, enala povevumdiyadu.
And Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursday, I have continuous meeting.
Elardarimayenala meetingarikum, enakor assistant, ikudun, poradrar.
I cannot conduct all the meetings, so, and he is so hard to get an assistant.
Veda vali illamupattavudhal nal.
At last, the tenth person, it was me.
Irkara patthavudhal, naantha patthavudhal.
And among the tenth person, I was the tenth person.
Avallaray, adidinu, over qualification ochirka, namo onni, labralistla, ni, naaninut.
And they are all having some qualification in labor list, I stood.
Abridina, ivana kodukala, eduke, mattressla kodukala, abridinada, venisiwa, emergency keertukalanta, ene mattressla vutanga, adaladha, na mattressla matna.
And he can.
Illana, yengi, irupani, enakethiriyadu. Ana, angavandha paraguda, ooliyathunadie, vityasamana pokkalalapurindu, vallamudindu.
After returning to the place, I am able to see the many ways and ministry.
Onadie aviyey devan yevanu.
And your spirit must be urged by God.
Onakal nimberiyathungu edakudada.
And you should not allow to sleep peacefully.
Ullavichu elupiruvar.
And he will give you a burden to wake you up.
Poradu.
You must try.
And athumavka jommane.
And strive for the soul.
Sabikaga jommane.
And pray for the church.
Ippudi devan unelupikiteerupanu, yevanu.
And God will urge you and make you to do all these things.
Praktishvandrichina, ningadhan jayajivincharinga.
When you have this practice and you are doing the overcoming life.
Ni jabichitirekum, ni vittalarkum, adu aviyanavusulvar, ni porappadu.
You may keep praying and the spirit of God may urge you to.
Ni karata ponnina, angor prachinarukka.
When you go there and there will be a particular problem.
Jabichitirpangani, varunna, nabijabichitirpa.
And they will be keep praying that you must come there.
Adumathramalaa.
Not only that.
Rendugurindhirle, onbadhamadhikara, aindhamasanaathle parkumbadhu.
When we look into second Corinthians, chapter nine, verse five.
Udaraatthomaikodukka, avrakal yevivittarka.
And they urged them to give willingly.
Oga pillakalukku kodukkara, ningapraktishpananga.
And you must practice your children to give others.
Parkilunkodukkara, baakiya.
It is blessed to give more than to receive.
Oga pillakalala, ningavallalgalai vallarungal, kanchana, kanchanakalaka vallarkadu.
Don't grow your children as stingy person and make them to be generous.
Yaar lobithano, kanchathanama, avrakalavallatranga.
And don't make grow your children as stingy person.
Na ponnavara, oru phone venduchae.
Last week, I got a phone call.
Avrakparinallarkaga.
And they were informed.
Pillakarenduvaru, purushanman, other, other, ourde, mahanum, marumakalafaringalaka.
And son and daughter-in-law, they were informed.
Inga, vaisana, appa rkaru.
And here, the old father was here.
Ivar vaisaidch.
He got old.
Ivarkisothu kanakalakalameru.
And he had unaccountable questions.
Indukkute, payanukka phone pottu, ewalagu varumana.
From here, and he got a phone, before he asked.
Video phone.
And he threw a video phone.
Video phone la paya, yengiavukanditupesi ta, pinala patha fruits arundiche, ivulapalamada vangringa, yar, appa ingirundu phone la, andapalathavideala pathitaru, palo. Avrakshabradukangi, ivulapalama, naipriyana, na sambadichinana, chethu vichya, onakaveedala, appa, shoraysabradu, vannamattamodukkun, ipriyal.
In the video call, and you can see behind there was many fruits and these many fruits you have purchased and they were looking to the phone and he was amazed.
Adukpara, oru solirka, nalai, attanal, kolambe, lamasaptrukka, apritan, the vittai vanginen.
And then after. Then after he said, and without such things, Ips.
Irkara variki shabde, alla, sandoshama, parlavuduporudupar, irkara variki onume shabdame, abidi vayakkatti, vaytakkatti, karavangi, thiripikaari, obiduva, diesel potana, otamudiyam. Kanchathanamani, na, adiyavipatiyachu, adi, bhatidair, class, orumari, niituk.
Until then, you reside in this world, you eat well and enjoy well and don't be a stingy person.
Avrakalavallalgalai vallarungal.
And make all your children grow as a generous.
Na jollukaradha, na, yarakkara kanarada, nisayao, ooru.
And the drawing well will give more water.
Enna, adinade, chakkadhamari do.
If not, it become a ditch.
Odugara tanirukupayar, nadi, ketikadakruthukupayar, kutta.
The flowing water is called as a river and that was stagnant, is called sapu.
Kodukkara, oru pallakku, avrakal.
And make your children to give to others.
Vangiradhi parkilunkodukkara, baakiya.
And blessed to give more than to receive.
Kodu udaraatthomaikodukkumbari, avantant sakodharari yevinan.
And he urged brother brother to give generously.
Ni kodukthupalak, andukiteerukka.
If you practice to give and you will receive more.
Ni kodukalana, abidi breakaidu.
If you give not, it will be break.
Saradha, oru tirkadrisinndi, manavi, vandu tirkadrisitthi, pesara.
A wife of the prophet came and speak to the prophet.
Abavu vittla enna erkinkakara.
And he asked, what is in your house?
Oru kodan enna erkinka.
And he said, one pot of oil.
Kodatthal, la, uddikiteeru, naramlikiteerukka.
And in the pot that you have, you just pour it and it will be filled.
Yela vittla vendu vangi vechi, attanakodamvandala, uddikiteerinsana.
And how many pots you have, you get from other houses and you fill it.
Kodam illai, endusonnavanee, ennai, ennai, nindru boy.
And when she says there was no pot and the oil stopped.
Manasu onakillayyo, devan onakokodupadhe, niruthivaduvar.
When you don't have the heart to give and the Lord will stop it.
Eliduvichika, neerimulikal.
You write in the proverbs.
Angen, engel illa, ningadhan eliduvikino. Na oru vittukupoyinna.
I went to house.
Rendu akka thangachikubangara shanda.
For both the sisters and the.
Kadesala compromise, keneekooduna, rendu kalyanaagadu, chinnabuligada, uchakata shandaki, naam payirka.
To compromise them and I went to the peak of this fighting.
Adu rendumay vittla, adikidishanda, vutukadakarakase.
And both the cases are used to often fight in their house.
Abanakadesala chunnay, illa illa, opparavagun.
At last, I say, you must be concerned.
Odane, andapullasana, pessipessi, shandai poduvadi parkilum, pessamalupadu, naladu.
And by talking to fight rather, to keep silent is better.
Ebedi, pessipessi, naanjan, neerimulikal, mupputranthamadhikaram, madhala vasanam. Abidana, karidhana, neerimuli, mupputranti illa, ni, ivasunnadu, ni, oru neerimuliyadhan, chakannu, pessipessi, shandai poduvadi parkilum, pessamalirupadu, nalam. Eliduvichichu, ningangia, pessiputari. Na edukidu solradha, na, nama indhanatkala, pillakalukki yevanu, kodukkara, oru pallakkana.
Why I say this and you must urge your children to give and you must have them practice to do this.
Kanchathanam pannada.
And don't be stingy.
Orusalala, yalegalakurupanga, enna kurupanga, thirima, ivan pottu, klinjubonadrasakuruppa.
And some.
Ivan pottu, mooshtha, adakuruppa, adavundu, periyadaanadharma mare, kodukakudada.
And some, they give their old garments to the poor people and.
Oneneseekaradu bole peranay. Oneneseekaranana, ni andaklinjatay, podu matilla, ni purusupodurilla, abniyadu se, oneneseekaradu, maadi peranaseena, ni purusu, ayigodun, arto.
And love others as love yourself and you must give them new garments.
Ebediirka, ovraesam, vityasamara, ka, omalak, edin, sariyavarda? Bible enna solradu.
What does the Bible say?
Avrakal, ni kodukkara, oru yevi vallakkana.
And you must urge your children to give, be generous to others.
Kodukka, kattar kodukiteerupar.
When you give to others and the Lord will give to you.
Devan onak kodukkara, oru, onadie butiyapuruthu, than kodukiteerupar.
And only according to the understanding, the Lord will make them to give to others.
Ana orusalala, remba kanchathanama, arkanga, paravala, avrakusertuvikumbari, tolleyay kodukrakarana, Bible sol.
But some are so stingy and the Bible says, and the Lord has given you trouble to gather up.
Pressangila, enna solirka?
And what it is said in ecclesiastes.
Matalakusertuvikum, tolleyay, onakay, arputivithirukara. Abidana Bible solukaravu, solidiranga, mattavunakaga, sertuvikara, tolleyay, onakachirukara.
And the Lord has given you the trouble to gather up for the others.
Mattavunakaga, ni sertuvichu, selvathu, sertuvichikiteerukka.
And you can gather up by giving the trouble for the others.
Tolley, ni andatolley, remba interestasira.
And that is a trouble and you are doing that, interestly doing the trouble.
Andindavisiyathal, ningarambagavnamarkano.
And you must take it in this matter.
Ella vichukum melaga.
Above all.
Erindha, gurindhirai, aindhamadhikarav, patinanka vasanathinbadi.
Second Corinthians, chapter five, verse fourteen.
Angenecholapottukaradha.
What did he said there?
Christvinanbu, ene naaldor, nerukki yevuvarade.
And the spirit of God's love, Christ's love was.
Oravi kuriyakadaesi yevudal, christvinanbu, ulavarambrudhu, onalatsumaarkamudiyadu.
When the love of Christ comes inside you and you cannot keep silent.
Christvinanbu, vittaname, piripavan ya.
And who can separate me from the love of Christ?
Uyervo, thaalvo, yenda valami, and christvinanbu, nerukki yevumbrudhu, yenda valami, ona asikamudiyadu.
Height or depth and whatever the powers may be, when the love of Christ is in you or nothing can separate you.
Janame.
Dear the child of God.
Onayar yevuvar.
And who is urging you?
Enda aviyeyevuvarade.
What spirit is urging you?
Unsinthayevuvarada.
Is your thoughts urging you?
Tavurseyavupadukaraya.
Are you urged to be doing?
Pavamseyavupadukaraya.
Are you urged to come to?
Kovapadayavupadukaraya.
Are you urged to commit anger?
Shandai podayavupadukaraya.
Are you urged to do the fighting?
Nidibidi nadakkaniyavupadukaraya.
Are you urged to do according to your flesh?
Illa, aviyanavur uneyevuvarara.
Or the spirit of God is urging you.
Deva alayam pohayavupadukaraya.
Or are you urged to go to the temple of God?
Avan aviyey deva alayam kattadheyevan yevuvarara.
Or your spirit is urged by the spirit of God to build the temple.
Yuthumbanna, aviyanavar, jabathukaha, uneyevuvarara.
Or the spirit of God is urging to do fight for them through prayers.
Onakkulirukkara yevudal, entanmayu lade.
And what aspect or what nature you're urging?
Christvinanbu, oru manidinukulla, yevumbrudhu, avan ellavatinkuppaya ennuan.
When the love of Christ comes in a person and he will consider or count everything as a done loss.
Oru onakulla, yevumbrudhu, ellavasi, nasthamandre ennuan.
When the love of Christ is urging him and he will count everything as a loss to him.
Anbu, vittene, piripavan ya.
And who can separate me from the love of Christ?
Pattinio, nirwanamo, nasamosamo, uyervo, thaalvo, varungariyamo, nigalgariyamo, maranamo, christvinanbu, vittene, pirikkaadu, naan, nichaythirukara.
And for distress or persecution of feminine or nakedness or peril or sword, whatever it may be, or death or thoughts or whatever it may be, it will never separate me from the love of Christ.
Simpsonude, walvi, nam parkumbadhu.
When we look into the life of Samson.
Anin palayathalirukkumbrudha, avaneyevathovakina.
When he was in the camp of Dan, he started to be urged.
Estavolu, kundaduvi, lakumbrudhu, yevathovakina.
When he was between the Zoro and Estol, he was urged.
Palatholvi.
In which there were many figures.
Many vilchi.
Many defeats.
Palayelupudlin thanmai.
Many fallings and many revivals.
Palathadumathangal.
Many stumbling.
Ana kadaisile, avnde othamudichadu, adheyedatlamudicha.
But and alas, and he end the race at the same place.
Neerimulig, sorry, nyayadipadigal, patinara, muppati, onrre.
Judges, chapter sixteen, verse thirty one.
Adakkay, engamudidinpar.
And see where his burial ended. Pinpo, avan sakodhararum, avan tagapan vittara, aniverum poi, avaneyedukkundavandu, zoravukkum, estavolu, kundaduvi, avan tagapannayam, manavavin, kallari, adakkamaninargal, avan istaveli, irupaduvarsham, nyayam, sarithan.
Irupaduvarsham kalichai, karata, onde othamudichadu, adakka, engavandinikide? Adakka, engavandinikide, adi nelavarathal, da, onde adakka, vandu.
After twenty years and he came to the initial place where he was.
Ah, zoravukkay, estavolu, kundaduvi, lakumbrudhu, aviyanavariyevathovakinar.
The spirit of God started to urge him when he was between the camp of Zoro and Estol.
Yeluchi.
And there were many fallings and revival.
Palathadumathangal, palanile, niruthudhalka.
Many stumbling and many falling.
Irupaduvaradu, onde valkay ponnadu. And twenty years his life passed. At the end he was buried him between the Zoro and Estol. In the name of Solomon was not found in the heroes of the Titans list, but the Samson name was found in the list. When we look on the week of Hebrews chapter eleven. In verse thirty-two, Samson came to the place. Your race or end of the race must come to the new. Your race must end in the initial state. How you were in initial days and your anointing must end in with this. Twenty years or six years or whatever it may be, the end must be a victorious. It is all close our eyes. And where is your beginning and there must be a glorious end. The spirit of God is calling you in this morning time to come to the earlier state. The spirit of God is speaking to you once again, he will urge you and come to the former state. Perhaps you have given room for the wrong urging in your past days. And because of that you have lost your vision. You may lost your family life. You may lost your personal life. And your secret life may be defined. And you have lost your greatness. But once again, the spirit of God has desired to bring you back to the earlier or anointed state. In this morning time, the spirit of the Lord is urging you and telling you what his desire is, that you have to owe you to the spirit. In what of all the, among all these urgings for all the urgings you have appeared in this story. Sometimes you have given room for the wrong urging and you stumbled away from your life. And you may lost your prayer life. You may lost your vision. You may count lost your calling. Your holiness may be defined. Your faith may be decreased. Your hope may be gone away. You may gone away from God. This fellowship or unity may be lost. Whatever it may be. And once again, the Lord is loving you. And once again, the Lord want to draw you back. The purpose the Lord brought you in this morning time. My son, once again I want to urge you. I want to stood up your spirit. I want to provoke your mind. Once again, I want to deal with your life. Once again, I want to lead for your personal and secret life. Your end must be the glorious end. Your race must end with anointing. Your end must end between the Zoro and Estol. And that is the place where I met you. The same anointing. The same wishing. The same revelation. The same spirit of prayer. The same holiness. The same revival. The same worship. Once again, I want to give you back. I anointed you as a Samson. Even if you fall, I will never leave you. Once again, I will raise you up. Your race must end between the Zoro and Estol. Once again, I will revive you up. I will lead you. The Christ love will concernate you. How many of your desire? Spirit of the Lord urge me and lead me. Every second I must be in the spirit leading. When you ask, the spirit of God will come upon you. And the spirit of the Lord is once again going to start urging you. Care after, the Lord will never keep silent in your matters. Already I had the greatest experience of being led by the or urged by the spirit of God. Say truly. And he made wake me up. He led me. And spirit of God spoke to me by hindering to go to the problematic place. In some places he urged me to help. And truly the Lord have given me the urging life or instinct life in the past days. And those who accept I lost the state or lost the experience because of some such circumstances. I have experienced like this and I mean. And it will be very clean, cleanly known to us. The spirit of God will urge us. His detail is very correctly. I don't know how to admire it. And very accurately he speak to me. And how many had this practice? In many kind of situation, you may lost it. But now I believe. And this message once again, he is telling to give you back. And if you don't have this practice till now, you are going to practice right now. If you have lost, the Lord is going to give you back. And care after, the spirit of God leaving may be amazing to you. Get that anointing. The anointing where the Holy Spirit leads you. The anointing by the urging of the spirit. Open your mouth and ask. In a rendu nimesha, rendu nimesha. And the Lord speak to me, I am going to make a generation who are urged by the spirit of the Lord. It may be you or your husband, your children or your family. Or it may be the sister or brother nearby. But this life is so beautiful life. Then after his life will step to shine. Till the Samson was stood up by the spirit of God, he was a silent man. And all the kingdom is looking at him, he fear and trembled. Hallelujah, hallelujah, hallelujah! This is anointing. It clearly point about all the wrong urgings comes in you. The spirit of the Lord clearly warns you what is right and what is wrong. His God will completely make him feel and drive him right. The anointing that you received now will confirm in you. This anointing will urge you. This anointing will lead you. This anointing will instruct you. This anointing will rescue you. This anointing will make you to stand firm. This anointing is coming down now. Katori varthila kaistothramanua? Parisutthaviil yedululla valkai kaistothramanua? Aviini yedulinnvalkai parichivike ellar karulchigimudiyai istothramanua? Aviini yedulinnbadi nadakkarullai serkavara purabidinallistothramanua? And the naalakandre ellari ayatapaduthumudiyai istothramanua? Pedakkumarunparisutthaviyanavuka istothramanua? Ella magimyaavukai selitistothramanua? In the way that the Thavida pola, in the Chivita, Satan will come. And the nattvinkla varaavadi, kathada aviyanavare, alkondanadathumudiyaga vendikaranga thave. And the Vellugada kathave, and the Kuri Solugaraavi, yedululla than the Aviya pathanava, adatti naanandaavare. And the Aviya lavandu toodipandanaadu, aduvala kathave, engelakulakada pallada Aviya adatta padiyaga. Kathada Aviyanavarengalanda nadathumudiyaga vendikaranga thave. And the Neerwanandarathale kathave, and the Mristotharama kathave. Parisutthaviyanarali yevappadu vanandharathukooni, angamirungalodu sanjerithil thoodeeridunka panividaseedharu. Aviyanavari yedhalengalaknada tu yesuipola, Aviyanavari yedhalnada tu engelaknada tumdiyaga vendikararo. Simpson godakatha, vaidhinirundananda Simpson goda devundia, aviinal yevappattavna. Devundapalaganakannupada yevapteva avinal yevappattavandaduvala. Naangalumada devaalakthukvaruthukengala aviyn yedhalengalakuda tumdiyaga vendikararo. Parisutthaviyanavarengalo udukudanengalavadi, korusigundatavundia, aalaitte kattumudiyagavankle yedhalatanthiraandavare. Aduvala engelachivithi, engalakchidichivithi aalaitte kattumudiyaga, engelakulaviyanavari yedhalnada tu engelaknada tumdiyaga vendikaranga thave. And the Aviyanavariyavudalapalila, angadapalila gudakanna padavudeshimudiyagavendikaranga thave. Kadasiyagaavannukudakathaave, thanukkumistavilukunaduvaga, avankathaave, marithadakkamunappattanaaduvala. Engadakathaave, naangalumudakathaave, engadavatthate jageramai odi mudithakathaave. Naangalumudamunamayumulasannidhanathale, Aviyanavari yedhalanada padavalaaga. Aviyanavaruvarnalangalapodithi vadi naththi, andanalla Aviyanavaren semianavadi naththi, muddamayumaili naangalumudayaeradukpadumudiyaga. Katharaal podikappadandava Aviyan yedhalnada tu naanandathipinaan naangalichivithi, eppidiyadaandavare. And the Kalaril seendaduvala, naangalumudapaarshuttavangadattavadiyala kanna padengalukudavudeshim. Engalaitaathuravermiyakuruk, deketadanaandavartindichivithi, aviinal yevappattadanndachivitha thanthi. Engaligundaparashuttavakevandavari ikkai engalaiyathapaduthum. Devasumathalandeellamaklingathanaasruthanpu, ketadanaandavartindichivithi, vasanathanarangalaparashuttavakevadi ikkai engalaiyathapaduthum. Ella thudikanaamiveltukollam, yesu namathalani thurukkam.